I'm going to turn it over Denise and we'll go from there with regards to the topics for this learning session.
All right, thank you. So we have two main categories to have a discussion about this evening. The first is with reference to finances overall. And we have several things that we want to give you an opportunity if you have discussion or questions. We have the budget. We also have the OPEB and QComp levies. And then Director Hoheisel has a resolution for reauthorizing the previous authorized board approved referendum authority. If you remember on the finance work sessions that we had, that was that portion I believe was in green during the bars where we have to formally make a resolution that you want to continue that. So I'll let Kristen spend some time talking about that. And then we also have the process of the replacement for the vacancy for school board chair. And we've gathered some information for you. These are just drafts based on what other school districts who have gone through this process had. So we have a vacancy timeline for you. We have the process and some things for you to review and decide how you want to move forward with that. So what would you like to start with?
Well, I'll just open it up. Why don't we start with the QComp and the long-term with that Kristen? And if anyone has any questions, I'm assuming I can refer to the report that you're going to present tonight to kind of get some information. So does anyone have any questions about those items that we can address those tonight?
What I would like to say before you start is the handouts you received are the handouts that were in the board packet. They're the information you've seen before based on requests coming out of finance committee who have also added commercial industrial property. The difference that of what's presented or what might be in the packet versus what you have is you received a one-page item that said QComp slash OPEB because the tax impact is the same depending on what question you use. Just for sake of clarification, it's the exact same numbers. It's just one says QComp and one, they're two separate items as opposed to is it the combination of the two? Just that's all, that's the change to the documents.
It would be double.
It would be double.
Right.
Correct. And so it was just changing the title to help with the understanding that it's not mixed.
Yeah.
So that is the only change in these documents.
So if we were to levy for QComp, can that money be used for what we're using out of the general fund or does it have to be for new things within QComp?
It needs to be for instructional development.
So it's, the QComp money goes, the money that we levy for goes to the QComp, the agreed upon QComp program.
Right. So could it go to like the extra for instructional coaches?
You could pay for instructional coaches, professional development, or anything related to the QComp plan that the SCA would agree to using it to as well. So there isn't, to answer your question, there isn't free rein on the dollars that are brought in. There's kind of a two-step process.
So even if there are things part of the plan, already part of the plan that we're subsidizing with general, general fund dollars, we can't just use that? We still have to go to back, back to SCA or if it's already part of the plan?
You'd have to go, the, the way that the QComp plan works is it's an MOU agreement between the SCA and the school district as far as what?
Memorandum of understanding.
So it's an agreed upon, and the memo basically says, we agree to the plan as written, which was agreed upon. So what would have to happen is the SCA would have to come back to the table and we'd have to come to an agreement. So for example, if we, if the decision was made to levy for more QComp dollars and what we wanted to do, an appropriate expenditure would be to pay for Q, or for instructional coaches that are currently being paid for out of the professional development budget. You could then say, all right, what we'd like, what we would like to do, SCA, is we would like to take $435,000 and pay for those instructional coaches out of QComp levy dollars, therefore freeing up that $435,000 out of the professional development budget. That's how, that's how the chain would have to work.
And if we were going to free it up, is there any stipulation of what that can be or that can go toward like our overall budget to help offset that?
At that point in time, when it, so if it went back into the professional development bucket, that bucket is part of our general fund to which you, we could say, all right, we, we don't want to spend 435 on professional development. Now we want to put that into paying for something else.
Or as a reduction.
Or as a reduction.
Or a combination.
We could reduce that. So in effect, your professional development, with rough numbers, our professional development in that scenario, we'd, we'd say, we're going to spend 500,000 on professional development in totality. And then essentially we've taken that 435 as a reduction in professional.
So the answer is yes. You can use it for other.
So two things, I think, and I'm just trying to check my own understanding. One is you're changing how you fund it. Secondly, you may change the program. It may get bigger, smaller, whatever, bigger probably. So those two things are what's going on.
Yep. QComp would assume, the QComp plan would have, would assume more of an expenditure towards that is what would happen.
And as I understand it, we could adopt this tonight. It doesn't become final until December. And during this interim period of now to the date that it has to be certified to the county, you would want an MOU from SCA saying they are comfortable with doing this.
Yep, we would, yep.
And if they didn't, then we could, the board at that point could say, okay, since they don't want to do that, then we're not going to levy for this extra money. Or, yeah, because even if you wanted to do it, you still need SCA approval no matter what.
Do you have to reopen negotiations or can you just reopen a memo of understanding? You can just reopen the memo of understanding.
Do you have any inkling as to Joe Sias thoughts on this?
Actually, I do. I had a conversation with him this morning and he is supportive. They understand the budget implications and where we are. So I'm confident that we could come to some kind of agreement. We obviously haven't talked about it at all, but I think it would be, I think they'd be more than willing to sit down at the table and look at what that looks like.
And I've explained to the QComp executive board that this process, that that's what they would need to do if this would come to be.
And do you think there's enough time between now and December to get that done?
Yep, sure, absolutely.
What's the maximum on the, on the QComp sheet that you've given us? What's the maximum amount? Isn't the, the money that we can levy based on the number of kids times 69 bucks or something like that?
Ninety-one.
Ninety-one. So where does that, does that fall between the seven and eight hundred thousand in there somewhere?
It does. You're looking at about three quarters of a million dollars.
Okay.
And it's based on last year's student count?
Yes.
Not becoming? Last October 1st?
Right.
So October 1st, 2017.
So do we set a dollar amount tonight or do we just?
No, no. What I, well, what I would do is, you certainly can if you know your high. I would just say you levy to the max that's allowed. One thing, and this is more of just a FYI, and I'm not quite certain how it will play out formula-wise. For legislatively for QComp, what was in the bills that ultimately got vetoed by the governor was an increase in appropriation for districts that were already approved for QComp. Meaning, you know, the state sets their threshold and says, we're going to give, an easy number, we're going to give a million dollars to the districts that are participating. The request and what had gone all the way up until the governor was, let's increase that because districts' costs increase and, you know, students increase. And so we don't have new districts that are going to qualify, but they're still going to collect what they're owed. Because that bill was vetoed, we're now going to collect about 98% of aid where we were 100% last year. So we're going to lose a little money in programming, in aid, because that appropriation didn't increase. Does that make sense? What I don't know is going to happen because the QComp program as it's designed right now is $260 in its totality. That's aid and levy. Ninety-one levy, the remainder comes in aid. Is the state going to stay, it's still 260, but the aid amount just went down a little bit because of the proration at 98%? So you can get a little bit more in levy? I don't know if that's going to happen. And so what I would recommend is, you know, say 800,000 or say the maximum of what we're allowed to collect. Again, this, the goal of this is just to show you what the impact would be to our taxpayers. And then that's what we go and we'll see what comes back.
And that's at the 91. That's at the 91, that's at the map.
Yeah, yes.
Okay. When would we know? How would we know if we did the higher than that?
Um, when, well, it would be as the state starts rolling out the numbers. It would be, I'm guessing we know July, August, we'll certainly know how that looks by the time we see the forms in September. Again, you're probably talking back to, if you understand that, you're, let's just say you're comfortable as a board with the max, which you know is going to be probably between seven and eight regardless because it's only 2%. You're talking thousands of dollars, not, you know, in three quarters of a million. If you're comfortable with that, I'd recommend going to the 800 and just, because that's where you're probably going to be with the max. And then once we see those numbers in September, late August and September, we're going to know if we're right in there.
The other thing, question is if we adopt this tonight and we get a lot of pushback from the community during the election or whatever, even if we had an agreement with the SCA, we're not bound to go forward with it. We could just say, you know what, we don't want unfunded levies. So the board at that time could still back out of this at that point.
The only, and this will go for both. The only thing that happens, and I know this came up during our last levy cycle, is this is the only time you can kind of put it all on the table. But what will happen is, is that will be in what, what our taxpayers see in their proposed levy. And so you might get some voices based on a proposed levy, even though we know we're going to scale that back. You just have to be prepared that's, that's what's going to, the proposed levy is going to look like. It's going to be reflective of that.
And what's the deadline or to, when's the, when's the last date? When's the date that we have to have this in? We're going to?
The June date.
Well, the board decision, the board decision in June, because I enter that information in July because they're collecting and at the beginning, and we only have one board meeting in July.
So it's like the end of July.
End of July, beginning of August is my timeline of when all that information needs to be submitted.
Has to be submitted. And then it doesn't show up in tax statements until fall, right?
Correct.
September, October.
So you take action?
And then the state's taxation is accepted. Action after that comes up.
Yes.
And then we actually take the action in December.
Correct.
So is there any reason the SCA would be opposed to what we were talking about before? Moving some of the dollars around?
My guess would be that it needs to be a compromise and beneficial to both parties. If it doesn't come out that way, then they're probably not going to be.
So they wouldn't do it just to help the budget? Is that what?
I can't speak for them, but my guess would, I mean, we all know how it works, right? That's, they're going to want to, they're going to want to know that they're, they're being taken, taken care of in some way too.
Well, I can tell you, I've asked a couple of teachers, what do you think? Should I vote for this to increase, you know, they're like, does that mean I'm going to get more money? It's like, well, I don't think so necessarily, but that's, that's, that's the, you know?
Yeah, I think one of the.
The money in the budget, that's what people think of. Like, is it going to benefit me in what I can do, like I'm going to do?
I think one of the things that has happened too with our teachers, that stipend that they get for their performance pay, from where it was originally dropped because of a number of things. And as we worked through the budget, part of what they did was decrease the stipend that they got. So I'm sure many of them are hoping that if you go out for a new levy, that that will get up to, you know, where it was before. So that's probably where that question came from.
What was the difference, is it a big amount that it dropped?
Yeah.
A hundred dollars, 500 dollars, thousand?
Was it from 16 to?
I want to say it was 16 to a thousand.
It was hundreds. It was hundreds.
It was pretty significant only because.
Okay, that's, that's my point.
I guess that's where I was going with my answer is I think that's the conversation.
And are there other places, I mean, if the, if we're subsidizing the cost of instructional coaches, which is part of the QComp program, with dollars that come from essentially professional development part of the budget, is there, are there other places where we could make a save, find savings to cover that cost instead of asking the community for, to give more money? You know, this is essentially an increase and what we're asking from the community. So can we honestly say to the community that there, we've exhausted every option for finding savings in the budget in our professional development?
I would say so, yeah.
I think one of the things to remember when we looked at, remember that bar graph that we showed you that with the property taxes and the money that we're taking in? And if you remember on one of those slides, it shows that we're decreasing about 40-some dollars this year from what we had last year. And so if you remember when we looked at those numbers, if you would approve and move forward with both QComp and with.
OPEB.
OPEB, excuse me. Both of those, you'd be back up to where you were last year. So it's an increase, but it's not more than they've paid this past year. And that's just because of the growth in the community. You know, the amount stays the same, but it's spread out between more people.
But, and I'm just trying to follow the thinking, part of the reason we would be motivated to do this is it would free up money to use in the general fund. But if part of that ends up going to teachers because it was significant by however many teachers you got in there, it's not going to free up as much.
It could be anywhere from about 500.
That was my question.
So if we have 500 staff who are on QComp and that, it can, you probably know those numbers better than I do. But if we have 500 licensed staff who are able to access QComp and they would increase it by a hundred dollars, then you have 500, or you have, yeah, 500.
Fifty thousand.
Fifty thousand. Yep. And then if they do it 200, 100,000, 300 would be 150,000, which would be pretty much close back to where I think they were before. So if that's 750 to 8, yep, you'd have, you know, 600 instead of 750 if you choose to do that. And I, I think one of the things is we haven't had the conversation with the SCA. They may be, you know, nope, we understand where we are and, and, you know, I think we need to be optimistic in those conversations with them.
Who would set the parameters for that discussion, the board and?
You would set the parameters and say, you know, go negotiate.
Going back to, because we feel a need that we want to provide a bucket for catching problems at other schools that we talked about at the last meeting, that you'd have this funding bucket.
Well, remember, this isn't going to give you additional money, right? We're trying to think of ways to fill those gaps that you have already. So even if you move forward and get the funding for both of these, both levies, that isn't additional money now that you have to play with to be able to fill the gaps. That's money that you're spending already from contracts.
Right.
So you, you know, the money that's coming in isn't new money for us to say, oh, we can put more to behavior supports or more here. We're already using your fund balance, right? So it would decrease the amount that you have to take out of the fund balance.
So it is, I mean, it is additional money in, it's just not, we can't do anything new.
Right, exactly.
So you're, you're making that statement as if we're, we're going from 5% to 3-point something and you're saying if we voted for both of these, it would get the fund balance back up to the 5%?
Closer.
Closer, not back up. I mean, it.
Well, it'd be 1.7 million. It's got to be pretty close to 5%, doesn't it?
If we did both.
If we did both.
At the full amount.
Realizer one fiscal year off, but true.
Right.
Yeah, right.
But I mean, when, when you say 3.4, the world's falling, you go, well, hold it a minute. You know, let's just calm down here a little bit.
You just, you can't count the total dollars of the QComp piece though, because you, you know that the only, the amount that you're trying to gain back there is like the 435, 450, whatever that amount is. So that amount is what you gain back. It isn't the full, if you did 800 and then.
Because that's what's already in the plan.
Is that what's in the plan?
And that's what's in the general fund.
So anything beyond that, we just have to do new things in QComp.
Can you review when we started tapping the general fund for QComp? Was it right at the very beginning, at the inception of it? And was that the plan for, was, did we have a plan? Was there any sustainability put towards that when we started it? Was there any long-term projections for that at all? Anyone know?
The, well, the plan, from my understanding from those of you who are around the table is that when the plan was created was the year before I came. And when we sat down and looked at the plan, we did share that we didn't think it was sustainable at that time. But we went ahead with the plan. I think your, your superintendent previous to me had said, get this done, let's do it. And so we went forward with the plan, but the SCA has now worked with us over the last couple of years to kind of close the gap on what we were helping out with, with the general fund.
So what we have worked on with them is to reduce expenditures inside of that QComp plan so that the plan as it sits right now at this point in time is fairly balanced right now. But as, with the plan having yearly increases in it, it isn't a sustainable piece into the future as it sits right now.
To fill you in on the context piece of what happened when the interim superintendent was here and it was put into place, we were in conversations of budget reductions at that time. And at that time, we did have instructional coaches. The instructor, there have always, well, I shouldn't say always, for a period of time now, instructional coaches have come out of the general fund budget. QComp was then designed, agreed to, whatever the plan design was, was to stay instructional coaches can then be part of the QComp dollars. The intent was at that time to shift what was being paid for instructional coaches out of the general fund into the QComp plan. What ultimately, so back to, was it designed where the general fund has to sustain QComp? No, actually, QComp, a piece of QComp was brought in to help sustain the general fund because you're swapping those instructional coaches that existed into a QComp plan, which is kind of the same discussion we're having right now. What then happened based on that plan was the instructional coaches became, became one for every building. So we increased the number of instructional coaches, hence not alleviating as much as we thought out of the general fund. So we used to have five instructional coaches out of the general fund before QComp. Now we have four because QComp picked up one of those instructional coaches and added their own. Does that make sense?
Okay.
Because the discussion about having QComp are not, it's about eight years old. We just chose not to do it because previous SCA administration said, we aren't going to take it if we just take the state money. We also want local money. And the board at that time said, no, we're not taking local money. You just take the state money or we won't do it. Well, we didn't do it until Nelson came and kind of looked at it from a instructional.
Stefan Lance.
Yeah.
One concern I've had with QComp, just in general, kind of more broadly speaking, is, is that it's a lot of extra steps, hoops to jump through. It's extra paperwork. It's a lot of extra sort of procedural things that teachers have to think about. And I guess I wonder, if it's working, then that's great. But if it's just more work, more busy work that is distracting from, you know, what really matters in the classroom, I mean, how do we know if this is working? I know that QComp fulfills a big part of what we have to do with the TEDUP. I still don't really have a clear idea of how those two things are different. And if we didn't have a QComp program at all, what would we be expending to just fulfill those statutes of teacher quality improvement plans, the TEDUP?
Essentially the same thing.
They look exactly the same.
Pretty much. That's how we have made it as simple of a process as possible, is blending the two and making them streamlined. So it is, it isn't really accurate to say that QComp is adding stuff into the process for our teachers and, and I would.
So maybe I would say TEDUP is the thing that did that, right?
Yeah.
And that hasn't been around forever, right? That's relatively new.
It hasn't. But it's statutory requirement.
Right, right.
About five years now, four or five years.
Okay. And so I guess that's not very much time to really figure out whether or not it's effective. I mean, sometimes it's new systems that we implement, whether it's in our, in our district or if it's statewide or whatever, it takes a while for us to figure out whether or not they're having a really positive impact. You know, are they helping teachers do a better job? Do they make the job, you know, more impactful on students? Don't you?
Yeah, I, I think, I think from our, from our perspective, just the alignment that's been able to help, what happened with the help of our QComp coaches, we didn't have teachers setting goals, you didn't have principals setting goals. And how do you know if you're achieving your goals if you never set them? So between illuminate, looking at our data and your results policy, and now having this in place, now you're going to be able to see and track some of those, that progress. And what we do, and in fact, just in our administrative team meeting today, our retreat, we talked about our principals now are really valuing getting together in August and they have all their data back. And we show them what's happening at the state level, district level, their school level, and down to classroom level. So when you talk about making progress for, you know, read well, kindergarten readiness and read well by third grade, that's where it comes right there. So we see them as really well-aligned and a good partnership between the SCA.
I guess a big question mark for me, kind of piggy, piggybacking on Sarah's maybe, Could you explain, and I know you've explained it before, but I just can't hear it enough. So just if you could just explain one more time. Is it possible or, or to go back to the base where we're not, you know, I know that we added on because we were, we were in favor of the instructional coaches. We liked it and we added on to it, which is, which is wonderful. But now given, given the financial situation that we have and some of the other issues at some of the other schools that need attention, what my question concern is, is, is it, is it possible to go back to kind of the base with this, given, given some of the other big-ticket issues that we have currently in our district right now that, that we're facing? And maybe scale back a little bit for the time being? And how does that look? Is that play into this and if so, how?
I would argue that we aren't even at the base yet. We have one instructional coach for the high school for whatever number of staff. If you were going to do that appropriately, you would have at least one more instructional coach at that high school. We don't have a full set of instructional coaches for all of the elementary schools. So I would say that from that standpoint of the program, we haven't even reached a base level. So taking away from that, is that an option? Sure, it's an option, but you have to, you have to weigh what the impact will be to supporting the teachers in the classroom.
And we also have to, you know, look at, you know, we have to look at the dollars and, and, you know, for me, we've got some specific needs, you know, in the classrooms themselves and we've got to weigh these tough, these tough issues, so.
What I hear you saying, another ingredient is if you don't do this, it's not sustainable. In other words, if, if you don't approve this, one of these forms, then eventually it's, it's not going to sustain itself financially.
It will, I would answer it this way. It will be like all of the other programming that we've talked about, that regardless of what happens, increases as the years go on. And so it will become another program that at some point is not sustainable. Approving this really has, as Denise pointed out, has more to do with offsetting the under 5% that you're coming into under a fund balance than it has to do with sustainability.
I think the hard part, right, is your, is everyone's contracts, you know, as you go through and everybody's contracts change. Anything that you have that has a fixed base of money coming in is going to, it's going to impact it. I think what we've been able to do is meet with the SCA and say, all right, here's where we are not, you know, balancing out anymore. What can we do differently? And so they've taken cuts in their stipends. We haven't had the mentoring program. We've looked at a number of things to try and keep it as cost neutral as we can.
But, but see, one of the things, if you look out, that I'm looking at, as you were saying, to really have the program and have validity and do what it's supposed to do. One, the program is right now where it needs to be in terms of, for example, use the example of the, the high school. But they're more elementary positions. So I'm saying, are we ever, even if we do this, are we ever going to be at the point where? where it's not ideal, but it's the way you sort of say, if it's really going to work, this is what you've got to have? Is it ever attainable?
Well, I think there's a conflation of two thoughts on that one. One is, the program as a, I wouldn't confuse the program as a whole being effective or not effective, or doing what is. The question that was asked is, can we bring instructional coaching down to a base? Which the answer is, if that's the question, the answer is, we haven't reached a base yet, because a base, in our minds, would be each building has a full-time instructional coach, so they're not shared, and the high school has more than one instructional coach. I would say that that, anytime you can get more support in that, it's going to be more effective. Right now, I would say it is as effective as it can be in its second year of implementation as a Q Comp plan. But anytime you start, just like any other program, you would look at taking away, the minute you start reducing it, it's going to lose effectiveness and impact.
But I guess what I'm kind of getting at, Bob, and maybe it's too theoretical, is that out there is kind of the promise that, look, when this is up, really going and effective, this is some of the minimums you have to have in place, like additional people at the high school, or somebody who cover all the elementary schools. And I'm saying, okay, that makes sense. See, but what I see on this, and I have, and I've raised this question before, and I think other people do too, I'm not saying instructional coaches don't do some wonderful things, because I think they do, but when it comes to setting priorities, I'm, I'm not so sure, and I'm just speaking for me, how high this is up there. And I know part of this whole idea with these instructional coaching positions and others was to have a more teaching steps, or more types of, I don't know the correct terminology-
Rare ladder.
Exactly. I mean, that concept is in there as well. And, and the question I have sometimes is, is this achievable even in the best of worlds? And, and we've gone to the legislature, and I plan to continue doing that as long as I'm in this role, and, and say more funding. But is that ever going to be enough even to make a little bit beyond that base that was talked about?
Yeah, I, I, I think that's a good question, Mike. I, I feel like what our teachers will tell you is that it's helping them be much more effective in the classroom, and that's what we're about, right? You talk about kids and learning, and, and trying to do the best thing in the classroom. I think our teachers would tell you that when it comes to implementing new curriculum, or working with kids who are struggling, because they also have behavior pieces that they're very effective in helping observe and model, teach, and, and help them in the classroom. So will we ever have enough? I don't think we're ever going to have enough in public education to do the way we'd like it, right? So we have to, we have to make choices. But I think our, we're very lucky in that we have some extremely talented teachers who are in those coaching roles, who even Andrea Shuler, who's a Lone Ranger at the high school, she's amazing, and people who are struggling, that's her first priority, so she helps them, and then helps others as she can.
And I, you know, I just want to say, not for one second do I, you know, disagree with that, or discount that, I just, kind of to Mike's point a little bit, you know, for me, I look at this, I'm like, okay, this is a program, and I, I guess I thought, from what I've been asked and talked to people who have been there, and my limited knowledge, is that it's, it was supposed to be a good thing, and it was a state that was kind of helping us and whatnot, and somehow, it's turned into a stressful burden. And that is where I'm, I'm concerned, because a burden, I mean, a burden-
What's the stressful burden?
To the general fund, so right now, we're looking at a non-voter approved levy, we're, we're asking, we're not even asking, we're looking at having our voters say, okay, you don't have the option here, we're going to vote on this, and it better be, I'm, I'm just saying, it's, I need to feel really good about that, because there are families, many, many families, that are taxpayers, and they've got, you know, and there are specific issues in the classroom, and I feel like we're, we're short a little bit here and there. And that's my concern, is I, I have stress and anxiety over this, because, you know, I'm, I'm a little frustrated with the system. I don't know who to be mad at here, the state, who, you know? And I, I think that's, that's where my head is at, at this moment.
And I have some of the same things.
See, and, and I, I think we're mixing up two, three things in this. Instructional coaches, I think, is a totally different discussion, and you and I disagreed about this four or five years ago, so this is, this is nothing new. I, I'd like to see what other companies of a thousand people spend on research and development, and that's what I look at instructional coaches. It's our prime research and development is the instructional coaches. It used to be, to sound like an old man, it used to be that if you had trouble at the high school in classroom management, the principal would come up and say, hey, you need to go spend some time with Sally May, she's having trouble with classroom management. Well, you know how often that occurred, or Sally May ever got better. Now we've got instructional coaches, it's more effective in the elementary, because you have smaller numbers, you've got one person for over a hundred at the high school. Of course, that's not ideal, but what are the chances you've got a hundred people teaching well at the high school? Let's say we have eighty-five, there are fifteen people that need help, who's going to do that? You know, you, you're not going to send your counselors in there, you've got assistant principals taking care of discipline, you've got your principal doing other things, that's why you have instructional coaches, I think. I mean, you look at research, and they say that's the number one thing you should be doing for staff development, is instructional coaches. And I, I said that years ago. As to the money that we're asking taxpayers, if I look at a $250,000 home, and I look at both Q Comp and O P E B, I'm asking a taxpayer to spend $3.60 a month, so that our general fund can get roughly a million and a half dollars. I, the, the prime group I ask about that is the old guys I go to coffee with. I said, here's what, here's the deal, then explain the whole thing. I said, would you be willing to spend $3.60 more a month? And they go, who'd notice? Now, granted, there are going to be some people who are going to notice, but do you suppose 90% aren't? If that goes up $3.60, that's what the combination of these two would be on the $250,000 home. So when I think about this, and if it gets us, allows us to keep instructional coaches, I'm fine with that. But I value, I mean, I think that's more valuable than anything else we do with staff development. And I realize all the teachers don't get it, or don't need instructional coaches, but the ones that do, I think that's a godsend for our district. And think about thirty kids in a classroom, and he's not a good teacher, but I can help him. You just impacted thirty kids. Where else are you going to get the money to do that? That's my take on the coaches.
I think too, the, let's say you don't do Q Comp, that doesn't automatically mean we don't have instructional coaches, it just means we have less.
Less meaning, what do you-
Meaning, because there's two decisions in this. One is, you, you keep things the way, there are really more than that, but you keep things the way that they are, we keep paying what we're paying for our instructional coaches currently out of professional development. Let's say that, in addition to not, not doing this, we say, we're not doing Q Comp anymore, that type of thing. That takes away the money that's, that Q Comp is paying for stuff. That didn't eliminate instructional coaches, that just puts more burden on us, as you're learning in Innovation Department, to figure out with the fixed amount of dollars that we have, how are we going to do what's, what's more appropriate? Because this is that level between governance and management, is, we're trying to figure out what, how to pull it off, and you're making decisions to say, here's the sandbox to pull off what we're pulling off. And so it, it's a layered conversation, and I think it's oversimplified to, to just say that, or to, to George's point, to say that, well, let's, maybe we should prioritize not using instructional coaches or that. I don't know, you have a lot of people that'll struggle with that.
I don't think anyone's saying that.
No, I, and, and I know this is what keeps coming up, right? We keep talking about instructional coaches, because it's really tangible, and we can wrap our minds around it. And I think to George's point, it seems like, at the high school, because there are so many kids, that it maybe is even more effective. But I thought, at least historically, that it's the principal's job to be an instructional leader in the building. And so it feels like, can they do that job if we, because to me, I feel like we have to do something about this budget, we can't, we can't let it be where it's at. And so is that an area where we need to ask our principals, and whether that's keeping them in the buildings more, or whatever it is, but that they're doing more of that instructional leading? Because we don't have, we can't do everything we want to do.
The principal's role is much different than an instructional coach's role, there's a difference between instructional leadership and instructional coaching. It's an entirely different job altogether, and I would argue that our, our principals, from early childhood all the way up through the high school, are going a hundred miles an hour, right now, the way it is. I think they are providing a great deal of instructional leadership, if not instructional coaching, inside of the jobs they're doing. So I don't know that it would be asking them to do anything more than what they already are doing with our teachers, because they're going to-
Teachers wouldn't get the individual help that some of them need, it just wouldn't be there. When you look at Rob Bach at the high school, if he doesn't have an instructional coach who can go and help support people, it wouldn't be-
And that's where I say it makes more sense, maybe there, if, if we do need to look at something that Rob can't for a hundred people, but-
So can you just remind me again, how much does Q Comp cost us overall, total, in totality, in the budget? What is, what are we spending-
That's covered by the state, and any extra?
What are we, what are we spending on all of this?
The reality is, based on Kristen's explanation before, is that instructional coaches did not come into play because of Q Comp, they were already there.
Okay, so what we're calling a part of Q Comp now, right?
We're calling, what happened is, you added Q Comp, and the blending of the growth of instructional coaches, so to Kristen's point, we were able to, the district was able to add instructional coaches, but for all intensive purposes, the district's part of instructional coaching is about four hundred, a little over 400,000. The Q Comp's portion of instructional coaching is a little over 400,000.
And I think that's what reflects it, doesn't it, Bob?
So in total, the-
That's the email you sent us.
To answer your question at this point, the only part of the instructional coaching plan that we are picking up, because Q Comp doesn't have the money to do it, is the mentoring program, which is a cost of about $30,000. That is what would technically be considered an expense that is a part of the Q Comp plan, that we have said, you know what, we all believe mentoring's important, we're going to find $30,000 to pay for the mentoring program, so Q Comp doesn't have to do that.
And then half of the cost, right?
We collect approximately 1.3 to 1.4 million dollars in aid for the Q Comp program.
That's right.
Putting Q Comp in a non-voter approved levy frees up the money in the general fund for the purpose of what? Teacher development, or anything?
No, to close the gap.
To close the gap, okay.
Both O P E B, you know, if you would move forward on a decision with O P E B and Q Comp, is just freeing up some of the money, like George had said, to close that gap, it's not for new things.
If you need the specifics, May 10th, I had an email to everybody.
That was a good one.
It was a great email.
Yeah, I know, I need to look at that again. Yeah, that was-
So then, can I just ask another really quick follow-up? How long have we had instructional coaches here? Is that something we've had forever, or is that something-
Four, five years.
Five years, I think.
So is that kind of in response to the T D A thing?
No, because it actually happened before T D A came into play, so.
So at some point somewhere along the way, somebody said, you know what?
Well, I think to George-
This situation requires that we put in instructional coaches, to, to improve whatever-
Teaching and learning, I think it's a point that George had said, is, if you look at the research, and if you believe the research, and there's a number of people you can go and read, the coaching concept, instructional coaching, if it's done well, is, has the greatest impact on your teachers. So I'm assuming, as your reading scores and other things started tanking a little bit, it was, all right, what are we going to do to help? The other piece is, you had many reading curriculums going on within the district, and so I think there's like, how are we going to pull this back together? Well-
Part of it was to guarantee fidelity in that part. I think where George and I are in agreement, and that's a significant part of that, is mentoring people who need help. And what I would argue is, that's probably anybody who starts out teaching, or most.
And is the total price tag of that 30,000, or is some of it in what we receive from the state?
The mentoring program is designed for our probationary first-year staff and our probationary third-year staff. We currently, we haven't had a mentoring program, official mentoring program, I don't know when-
Since 2000.
So that was, it's something that, from us, our point of view, and others' point of view, needs to be in place to help onboard and maintain our new probationary teachers.
And that's the 30,000, or that's?
That's the 30,000.
Okay.
Suppose we took just one part of this issue, and I, and I think it's a significant, and maybe it's more symbolic than dollars and cents, non-funded levy or assessment that you're putting out, what kind of a backlash? Is that going to hurt you more than it's going to help you?
I don't know, I think that's a question for you. It's because it's not-
I know, I know.
And I think that's where, you know, I mentioned earlier, we dropped $40 per household about, I think, this year. We didn't have people running saying, great, thank you for the decrease. This would bring it back up. I think the other point, Jen, I just want to make with your thought about the, you know, there are significant issues in the classroom, that's why we reworked within our current budget, how we support behavior at every school. We pulled the principals together for two days, we pulled together all our special end behavior supports people to talk about how do we retool for next year? To your point with this, if we do this, it's still not going to be extra money for extra support in the classroom.
So part of the reason why that $40 drop happened is our enrollment dropped, and the price of the community-
Tax base.
The tax base increased.
Just more, more people living here, so they share the load. So instead of you, you know, instead of eight sixty-eight dropped, eight sixty-eight dropped, or nine sixty-eight dropped to nine twenty-eight. So it's just more people sharing the load.
Doesn't have to do with the amount of kids. Has to do with the amount of houses.
That is one element of the, of the 30, it's, it's more kids. But with that, you, we also have an inflationary increase on our operating referendum that was approved too, so that almost counters. You might have slightly less kids, but you're asked, you're getting more money on an operating referendum, so it-
Mr. Chair?
I think, you know, for me, it's always been a philosophical question as to, you know, are we, if we're able to keep the tax as the same, or less, but still be able to do more, I've found that to be a reason to support. But that's a, that's a question each one of us has to answer, you guys more than me, you know, after the 21st, but I, I think our, the people I know have all thought, you know, that that's, that's reasonable, considering they know the costs of, of what we do to, for our kids. So I, how much time do you think we need for the other thing? Because this might be a good jumping off point to start talking about the transition.
Sure, we can do that, and then we can go back if you have more questions about the other things. So we just pulled together, and we means Barb, pulled together information for you from other districts who have gone through the process of filling a vacancy. And so we have a school board vacancy timeline, that is a suggestion when you look at, you know, trying to fill the position. And then we also have just a process that we pulled from other school districts who have gone through this, and just the legal pieces about what you can and can't do, should and shouldn't do. Part of this is, the first decision I see, you having the conversation about, is, do you want to try to appoint as a board? Or do you want to go through a process where people fill out an application, and then you call folks in for an interview? I think that's a process Barb had said you've used in the past. And so you would either determine together, or if you, maybe perhaps your personnel committee would say, we're going to develop an application, and pull together the application, have people submit, and then have them come in for interviews. From the way Barb shared from the last time it happened, is, there's interview process where you ask each of the candidates their questions, and afterwards, there's a ballot rating system where you, let's say you have five candidates, you choose four out of the five, and you just continue to narrow it down until you have one candidate. After that process, then it needs to be, we need to have, the appointment to the vacant position is effective on the 31st day, following the school board's resolution, if there aren't any petitions for rejection of the appointee within 30 days. Then at the next meeting, the person who's chosen would be sworn in and take their seat.
So it looks to me- So it looks to me like we need to do an application process, because that's what's in our board policy. Is that what others understand?
I did refer back to it, and that's what it looked like to me. Didn't talk about being able to appoint someone. But the application process makes more sense anyway. You know, more open, transparent.
Seems to me, if you figure this out date-wise, in the best of worlds, that person doesn't take office till August.
That'd probably be the soonest, right?
Yeah, it's like August 23rd or something like that.
Because I imagine it'll take you a little time to sit down and develop what the, what you want the application to look like, and then you post it, and you probably want that posted for a couple of weeks. Then you come in as a personnel group or together and say, all right, here's the applicants, when are we going to have interviews, what questions do we want? Call everybody in, go through that process. So I would say probably the very earliest, August.
The only thing I would disagree with is, I think if people are interested, they're interested, and I think one week would be enough for them to apply.
I would agree.
Because then August 23rd is doable according to the way I figured the, the dates. And if we wait two weeks for applications, I think we're even beyond August 23rd.
And there's no way to, to squeeze it even, so we could get somebody in sooner than that?
Not according to the way I...
And so they can't assume office before the 30-day petition period?
Right.
I think the only thing I saw, and Barb, you can double-check, but I will not be resigning till after the June 21st meeting. So you can't declare a vacancy on that date. So you'd have to have either a special meeting after the 21st to declare that vacancy.
Is there a reason for that?
Because I haven't, I haven't resigned. So you can't do a resolution until there is a vacancy, and so I haven't resigned until the end of that meeting. So you couldn't pass a, a resolution saying it's vacant, because it's not technically vacant until the resignation.
Why, what, is there a reason why you need to wait until after June 21st to resign? Is there something specific?
No. I mean, I, I, the only specific is I want to finish out that meeting on the 21st.
So we could have our regular board business meeting on the 21st. We say bon voyage, and then we have a special meeting that same night right after.
Because I have a letter basically resigning, that it will be hand-delivered to whoever the board chair is at that time, resigning as of 12:01 on June 22nd.
Okay, so before...
So the meeting would have to be the next day.
You could have it the next day, because that's when the vacancy actually...
So George was saying...
At the same night. Yeah.
You could hang out.
12:01.
Yeah.
12:01.
He would love that.
It'd still be the 22nd.
So we could have a meeting at 8 o'clock on the morning of the 22nd to just...
Pass a resolution declaring a vacancy.
So what else do we need in here?
Do...
Specifics.
Well, I think, I think it's really up to you, but I, I think, I like, it sounds like there's a consensus that you could do this within a week, just to, to set up that timeline.
Well, and maybe we need to write some of those in, like you said, June 22nd, so write that in.
So you could do June 22nd, special board meeting, declare vacancy by resolution.
Well, there's no reason we can't develop the application before. That doesn't have to happen after June 22nd.
Right. No, I, I was hoping you'd have it probably tonight.
She's got it.
Is this the one that was used in 2007? Is that...
Uh, no, I got this from a different resource, and kind of combined a couple of things. Open to suggestions. I will say, I think it's important. Maybe all of you remember when you fill out your affidavit, which can be messy, in order to run the first board, there are certain criteria, that's number six. I think it's important to put that piece on there. You know, why you're interested, what do you see your role are, I mean, all that. I can leave up to the board or the personnel group, whoever you want, and divide it up on who's going to finalize the application.
Looks fine to me.
Tom, who's on the personnel page?
That'd be me.
Me?
I think I'm on personnel.
Yeah.
I thought it was Mike, Tom, and...
I think Mike's on. I don't think you're personnel.
I'm on, I think.
I don't think I am this time around.
I think it's just Tom, basically.
No, it isn't just me. There's three of us.
No, I think it's Tom, George, and Mike.
Yeah.
Well, yeah, because we worked on Denise's contract. That's why.
You guys have been...
That's the last year. It's George, Tom, and Sarah. It's George, Tom, Sarah.
Yeah.
Okay.
It is Sarah.
Sarah's like, I thought...
You've had a lot of issues.
Well, my point is, even in, in terms of working with this, the specifics that may go to that committee...
Well, I say let's, let's work on it right now. I mean, this is like pretty, pretty close.
Yeah, I don't know what more you need.
I think it's fine. I don't see, I don't have any issues.
I think mailing down these dates.
I think, let's, let's do it. Let's just get this done. I don't quite understand why we have to have this time crunch thing, but maybe that's something I just, I don't know.
Which time crunch?
You can't, you can't resign, you can't, you have to resign, you have to officially be resigned and done before we can have a resolution.
Correct.
It seems weird that we can't have a resolution and date it forward, you know, like...
I could change my mind.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, that's, that's why.
Okay.
So what I have here, June 7th work session, which is tonight, June 21st board meeting, board officer reorganization, June 22nd would be...
Why would you reorg, can we just ask, how can you reorganize before you do that?
I would resign, I can resign the, my board chair position at any point.
Prior to 6:21, while we're doing that.
Yeah.
Develop application prior to 6:21. 6:22, you can put the application on the website.
Right.
Do it for a week. 6:29.
So you close it that Friday?
29th Friday? Yeah, 29th to Friday, yeah. Do it at 3 o'clock on the 29th. And then interview those people sometime between the 29th and...
The 12th is our next one, right?
12th is the next, is the July meeting. I'll do it between the 29th and the 12th then.
Is everybody comfortable with these questions?
Um, we can have to look at them a little bit, but...
You said this is similar to what you've used before, Barb?
Yes.
Your questions? Feels fine to me, so...
I'm laughing because the only thing I would say, if I were filling this out, I need more space.
Oh, yeah, you do.
But that's me.
That's gonna be part of the requirement. You may not...
Brevity, yeah.
That'll tell us something about the candidate. They're starting to write on the map.
It's gonna be online, though.
We're gonna ask her if they're red, George.
Yeah, exactly. What color are you?
Well, would we or would we not interview all applicants?
Well, I guess we'd have to see how many we got. We have 25. We're not gonna interview 25 people. Not that I think we'll get...
Then it gets tough trying to decide who gets cut out of that list of 25. Do we owe it to somebody who applies?
Yeah, the question is, do we need it? Can we, can we just look at the applications?
I think you need to interview.
And see if we can't make a process or make a decision based on that.
I would be more in favor of interviewing everyone who comes in, given the, the, usually, yes, everyone has the same opportunity.
Well, and the way they did it previously is you were given a time slot.
Like a five-minute, whatever, yeah.
Well, it was more than five minutes, but yeah.
But I'm just saying, give them a time slot to go through the interviews.
Yeah, we got a half hour.
Right.
We may be there all day, but that's...
Right. I think that's fair to me, as opposed to choosing prior to...
I was just trying to think in terms of saving time, but I, I personally would prefer to interview people too.
And I think we have to...
One more step.
Right. And that, which I, I support that. I think we need to look at, one thing in the calendar, and that 10 days or whatever is the 4th of July, in that week.
A lot of people will be gone that week. You might want to look at maybe the 9th or right after.
The week of the 9th.
Interview people and then make that decision like that day. Interview everybody and then come up with something.
You also have a meeting July 12th where you could actually talk about it.
Yeah.
What they did in the last time was interview everybody, and then board members kind of said, I want to keep John and Joe and Mary. And you said, I want to keep Mary and Sam and Sally. And eventually you got enough votes to keep a small group of people, and then you got smaller, and then you got smaller, and then eventually ended up with one.
Yeah, that's kind of what we did with the world's best workforce, is we tried to pick out the top ca... People prioritized, and then you took that on where you had commonality and worked from that list.
The voting process we used last time was available, all the people that interviewed things on there. Say there were five names. You went and voted for four, and then the next time you voted for three, and then eventually it came down to two.
What format of a meeting was it? Was it like a, like this type of meeting, or was it out of formal?
It was a special meeting. We held it at the district office.
Okay.
And the board kind of sat up front, the candidates, we had a table and a microphone. I believe we, actually think we, we ran it live on badly accessed TV, and then audience members in the back.
Okay.
Tom, it has to be an open meeting, doesn't it?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah, it's, it's almost as a special meeting.
So are, are, is the suggestion then that we have the meeting, we have the interview meeting, and then the next, we would come back another time to decide, or could we do it all? This says special meeting to conduct interviews and possibly vote for appointee.
And that, that's a choice for the board to make. Previous practice has been, at the end of that, you come down to one person, and you could adopt your resolution that night, appointing, you know, that person. So then the next day, the 30 days begins.
So what date are we looking at for that interview?
July 12th is what I had heard.
I think that's on the board meeting.
That's the school board meeting. That's your meeting.
9th or 10th.
What's, what day of the week is the 9th?
The 9th is Monday.
Which I, I guess if, you know, looking at, some people may be still out of town Monday. Maybe Tuesday would be better.
I think Tuesday's better.
10th?
July 10th.
I'd like either the 9th or 11th. Only because my wife has a very important doctor's appointment empty.
Which day? On Tuesday or Monday?
On Tuesday.
So you'd rather do it Monday?
I'd do it Monday or Wednesday.
We could do it Wednesday, the 11th as well.
The day before the meeting.
Either one of those would work with me.
That works, I think.
July 11th.
I hear Wednesday.
July 11th.
Time?
It kind of depends on how many applicants.
I think it depends on how many applications you get. Keeping in mind, some people may have full-time jobs. You may want to offer them kind of late, late-ish, later in the day, you know, late afternoon into the evening.
Yeah. And Barbara, maybe a way to do that is in the application to have a preferred time, and we'll try to honor it, but we can't guarantee it. And then you figure your slots from that. Because some people might be, yep, I can do it anytime, and others may be, well, do you think it'd be ideal if it was 4 to 5 or something?
So the review applications, when would we do, or would we, we wouldn't need to do that if we're gonna interview everybody, right?
Yeah, but are we gonna get them? How are we, will we get to see them before we interview them?
The interviews, or your, the applications?
Sure, on the 9th, 10th, yeah.
All right.
So July 11th.
Interviews.
So if we collect them on the 29th, basically, we can see them anytime between the 29th and July 11th, right? That's all.
Just giving you a moment to print them out.
Well, and I was gonna say, didn't, with some applications, maybe it was for superintendents, did we come into the office and look at them there?
That was a superintendent's, yeah. We didn't let them leave the office.
That might be a good idea.
Yeah.
Might be a good idea for this as well. We go to the office rather than...
Take a look.
One other question I have for you in the past. You have, as a board, have offered the MSBA Future Board Member Information Session, and I've had a few requests from people, if you, if that's going to happen again, with the August deadline for votes.
Filing.
Filing for the vacancies. Do you want to do that again? When do you want to do that? Do you want us to, I can have Barb contact MSBA and talk to the folks who did it before and see what dates they might have available?
Something else, though, that that triggers with me, if you go to the website, they have information, so you think, might, you, in other words, I'm saying, even apart from that, which I think is a good idea, they could go to the website.
Sure.
And if we provided that as a suggestion to applicants, you know, here's...
Sure, and we have...
Because it helps get them in the frame of mind, et cetera.
And then we also have publications that Carissa has developed that we can update for people also with the basic information.
The people that came last time were very good. That Gary Lee, I think, is the guy, and...
Was it Kathy?
I want to say Kathy Miller. I mean, they were, they were good, and I think they informed a lot of people who were there what being a board member might be like.
Would you prefer time to be before the application was live? I'm just thinking, I'm at a couple of weeks. I don't know if that gives us enough...
This application?
Oh, wait, are you saying this now?
I mean, you could use it for two purposes, I suppose.
I was talking about for next fall.
I was talking about for next fall, but I think what Barb was saying is if you did do it early, if somebody was interested, they might be able to come in here before they apply, or they might hear and...
So we could see if somebody could come now, and answer both purposes.
Yeah, we could do it towards the end of June, if you did it, you know, and you had it in the, I think we had it at 4:00 or 5:00 o'clock last time, and then people could come and...
Well, it works both ways, because somebody may apply for the short term, not get it, and then they decide, well, gonna go to the voters.
Sure.
I can come, I was out of town for when we did it last time, and I remember thinking, it might have been nice to have it earlier, because it was right at the time of, like, signing up, I think, or maybe a week before or something.
Yeah, so maybe try...
It'd be nice to have it in June or something, where if you're thinking about running, you can kind of find out a little bit about it beforehand.
So we'll have Barb call Gary and Kathy and see when they might be available.
And maybe like the 25th or something, right in the... That's open, yeah.
Oh, Gary Lee just hit me.
So I have a question then, about the officer situation, like, is that, what, I don't, I don't understand how this is gonna work. I mean, are we gonna reconfigure all of our officer positions?
And if so, do we have to do that before Tom leaves? Like, I kind of want to talk about that.
Talking about the officer position, what the process is gonna be for that.
Well, according to Maggie, because I'm leaving, we have to vote for a new chair. Whether that opens up the whole thing to everybody, that's a conversation we can have.
Tom?
But I was planning on just opening up the board chair.
Yeah. Why wouldn't the vice chair become the chair?
I, I had presumed that was going to be the case. However, Maggie indicated that that's not the proper procedure.
What she indicated is that if something happens to the board chair, the vice chair takes over the duties until you can have an election. And so she said with the, you know, especially because it's a 90-days, remember when we talked about that, it's 90 days back? Then you have to go through the process of re-electing your chair. Yeah, we all thought it was just...
Yeah, that's what I saw. And then I saw...
And then we obviously need a new vice chair.
Because, in a way, the logic of it is you don't have to have a vice chair. When you have a vice chair, the reason for having it is to take over if the chair's unable.
Yeah.
But I think it's not on a long-term basis. I think that's...
Yeah, this is just to fill this time period between the 21st through the end of December.
So, do we just need to do it, we just need to have a separate election for chair? Just chair? Or?
Well, then we would decide.
And then if it's a current?
I think the conversation would be that you'd have an election for the chair, depending on who that person is. If that person holds something other. Yeah, then you'd have an election for that, and the commonwealth would fall, nobody stopped.
And when would we do that, then?
The 21st.
Uh, the 21st. And then, do you get to vote on that, or not? You do get to vote on that?
Yeah, cause I haven't resigned. So, I can resign my board position, I have, I can resign my board officer position, but I have not resigned from the board till the end of that meeting.
Okay, so it's, it's sort of like if you weren't leaving and you just didn't wanna be chair anymore.
Yeah, exactly.
And you say, for some reason, I can't, I don't have time, or new job, or something.
Got a cold or something.
I threw all my hands up.
So that could always happen, that somebody was in a position and they'd say, I, I need someone else to take over this.
Exactly.
And then we would just have to go through the same procedure that we did before.
Correct.
That makes sense.
Where in the agenda do you see that happening? Act as one every day.
I would say you can put it wherever you want.
It's probably an action item.
Yeah.
Back to that vacancy timeline, if I may. August 12th, then, is the thirty-day period for petition.
Yes.
August 12th. So then, the 23rd would be the seat successor.
That's how I know, yeah.
Yeah.
Um, one other thing, back to the vacancy and the interview process itself, I have reached out to counterparts in other districts. I have a good array of sample questions. So when you come in to look at the applications, I'll let you take a peek at the sample questions and see if there's any changes you'd like to.
So are we, so we'll just, are we good with these questions the way they are for now?
I think when interviewing.
When you ask it, yeah.
So, okay.
Yeah, I think.
Well, couldn't wait, couldn't wait, too. I mean, if somebody's got, as you look through these, and somebody's.
Oh, yeah, something came up.
For consideration.
You would think you'd be able to.
Add to this.
Yeah. I think the key would be to make sure you run it by Kathy Mohn, to make sure you're not asking a question that's not violating, yeah. So, yeah, but yeah, I think you would, you would always maybe read something and you wanna clarify what they said, so you don't wanna have to just stick to the script.
Can I, can I just make a, I don't know, I, I'm just gonna say this. I don't feel super strongly, I'm just gonna raise the question. Question number three, please identify and describe how you would address what you believe are the district's three most important issues. I'm a little bit concerned about divisiveness. And if that three issues certainly kinda falls into some, I don't know, I could be completely wrong, maybe that's not even an issue, but I had a question.
Say, say more about that before you go on. What, what do you anticipate somebody would put down that would be?
I don't know. I don't know, I just, I don't know. I'm, I just, I don't, I don't actually really have a fully formed thought here about this. I just think, I don't know if I like that question. So, I'm wondering if we could put, what skills, perspectives, and expertise do you have that will enhance the work of the board? It just feels like, we wanna make sure that we have the questions be really as open-ended as possible. I guess I'm worried about the three most important issues as being like something that might, somebody might just sort of make a list and say, fix this, you know? I apologize if I'm not being super clear. It's not clear in my head.
I don't mind your second question, but I'd like to keep number three. I think it's important that they have a perspective on what the three issues are that they think are significant. And more, how would you address? I mean, it's easy to say there are three crucial issues, no matter what you put down, but if you don't know how to do anything about them, you're just a complainer. So I'd like to see that, frankly.
How do you really feel?
Hold back, George.
I think that was George's follow-up question.
Yeah. What are you gonna do?
Yeah, what are you gonna do about it?
What skills?
Yeah, I like the two.
Just a perspective?
Actually, okay, so what skills, perspective, and expertise do you have that will enhance the work of the board?
It kind of, it's, it's a little bit of an adjunct to number four.
It is. And number four, to me, is like, okay, I was involved in this PTA, and I did this committee, and I did that, and I'm, I've been involved in, you know, to me, it's more like experiences. And if it's, if it's, if it seems too repetitive, I'm fine, it's just not a problem.
One more time on your question, can you read that, Sarah?
What skills, perspective, and expertise do you have that will enhance the work of the board?
Cause I think that gets a little, add a little bit what George was talking about, too. What do you bring? And it tells you if they've been following it at all.
I'm okay with that question. I think it's good.
Okay.
And would you like me to insert it then after three? Make this a new four?
Sure.
So it comes before the PTA?
Yeah. I think that's good. I like that. All right, any other questions about the process or what you want? Otherwise, I just wanna say, this is great. Thank you, Barb. You need a Superman cape, a Superwoman cape.
She wears it.
It's great. It's there, it's just like imaginary, right? Um, one of the other things that we wanted to remind and review with you is the resolution to reauthorize a previously authorized board-approved referendum authority, and I'm gonna ask Kristen to speak to that.
So, and, and this is another, I'm gonna go ahead with what happened legislatively. This, this item, in particular, the $300 item that boards every five years would go through and make this motion and adopt, was actually approved, and in the bill that went to the governor, that it would just happen automatically. Essentially saying, we're not going to require boards every five years to go through this motion. We're just, if you've already done it, it will go in perpetuity. That was, and, and it's a non-financial issue. That's how it was viewed from the Department of Education. Again, unfortunately, it was packaged in the, in the bill that the governor vetoed. So, it was there legislatively, and that's why I held on to it. I had mentioned it before and said it could come, but I had to wait to see, cause it might have been a non-factor. So I will back you up, five years. They legislatively, there was, you know, there's always questions as it relates to equity in districts that can't pass referendums, and I particularly think, like Brooklyn Center and what.
North Branch.
A lot of rural, a lot of rural districts that are small.
Yes, they can't, they can't do it.
It's just no money.
And so this was legislatively, the government's way of, of allowing those districts to at least get, like, to catch up, to get the equity piece, to get $300. What it was for districts that already had at least $300 in voter-approved authority, you don't get new money, you just swap it out. So, so we went to our voters in 2013, and we approved $1,496 and change. Then we turned around and we said, we're gonna take the $300, and we're just going to put that into a different cat, we're gonna put that into the non-voter-approved category. We didn't get more money, we were still collecting the $1,496, we just switched categories. This is saying, our five years are up, we need to make this decision again.
So if we didn't do this, we would lose 300, we'd be down to 1196.
Nope, we would still collect.
Oh.
But that collection would still, that collection would, we would still collect the money, that would now, that would now expire under the voter-approved authority.
Okay.
As opposed to being a non-voter-approved item.
Okay.
And I will, and I hate, the three board members that were on at the time, the conversation that was had was, our voters really already gave us approval for this? So we're comfortable switching categories because they said it was okay that they've already approved this. So we won't lose money, but what would or could happen is when our operating referendum expires, then it's all on the table again. As opposed to, we already have $300 that they had approved originally, that's now set aside.
We don't go back down to zero.
Correct.
So it would only really impact if we expired and didn't renew, or didn't get a new?
Correct.
And when will our current levy expire?
Twenty-two.
Collection year of 22. It would be, you know, you're looking at November of.
Twenty-one.
Of 21. Right? Cause it would be for the following year.
And so, what I would be doing now, again, I was hoping that legislatively, it was, it was, it's just a process, it back to, you have multiple steps that create confusion as opposed to help with transparency. I will be in front of you, asking you just to reauthorize a resolution that was already passed, because we have to do it to maintain.
Has Amber the omnibus?
Was.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah, so when will you be in front of us with this?
Uh, if, if you're comfortable with this, I can put this, well, we can, if you don't need me to speak to it, it can go on the 21st, or if that's the decision, because that, this is all there is. And it can be approved on the 21st, otherwise I'd be looking at the July meeting.
I think what might be nice, cause it's a little bit tricky, is to present it tonight, mention it, and then vote on it.
But it's not on the agenda. It's not on our agenda for tonight.
Oh, I got you.
Well, you could add it, I mean, it's ready, this is it. It's completely up to you. Or I can speak to it as a report, you know, I do have a few more handouts for the audience, just so it's made aware and you can do some, I mean, I'm prepared, cause this is it. It would just be this conversation again on television.
And when's the deadline for renewing it?
Back to, it's this summer. Because again, it's for the next levy cycle.
I guess I would rather put it on, I know you won't be here the next meeting, right?
Correct.
Then, I'd rather put it on the following, and you can speak to it and then vote on it in August, if you're not in a hurry, rather than add it tonight.
We could report on it on the 21st and vote on it in July.
I'm not here to report on the 23rd. Like I say, I would, again, I'm willing to do it tonight.
Could you add it as an agenda item tonight and just do the reports, and she's got it and ready to go?
Maybe we could do a little video. Show it on the 21st.
She's like, ah, no.
I prefer speaking to people as opposed to just FaceTime.
Yeah.
The reason I, I do like the idea, one, you get it, and then you get some time to think about it, yeah.
Well, it's, yeah, seems like a little bit of a no-brainer, so.
Like I say, it's there, and it would have been there if the government could have gotten along.
Well, when you have a 1,000-page omnibus, well, I mean, there is that.
There is a case to be made.
We don't need to get into blame game. There's enough for everyone to cast out.
Ask that.
So, yeah. Do you, what is the, does it, do you want Kristen to share, amend the agenda and have her share something tonight, and then wait until July 12th?
Well, you could approve it without me.
Right, I mean, my question is, you know, I, like, to your point, it seems pretty simple, pretty cut and dry, it doesn't seem like it would need this massive presentation, you could add it.
Although, here's what I'm thinking a little bit, too. We got a lot on the agenda in terms of QCOM, OPEB, et cetera, and it may get lost as well. So maybe it's better to wait. I'm, I'm pretty flexible.
Yeah, I'm just gonna defer to the majority. We can add it as a report, and then you can vote on it on the 21st as an action item tonight, or, so you could have the report tonight and.
The explanation is, as long as your public questions are. Because it truly is a three-minute brief for me.
I think for me, I just don't like adding anything if it doesn't have to be added the night, that night.
George, Sarah?
I just soon get it done and get it off, but I understand what you're saying about the OPEB and the QCOM and then this, I mean, they all kinda do run together then, you know, and you'd like that to kinda, I mean, I, I think I understand that, and I remember the past conversations when we did pass it, but if you didn't go through that, it might be good to look it up and see what it's about.
What, what is the deadline for having to turn this in?
Summer.
It's, it's.
September 30th?
Yes.
I'm okay with Shelley's.
So then we can wait.
Yeah, I'm okay with Shelley's suggestion.
I just wanna, I think about, part of our role is to inform the public, and if we're putting too much on there.
Right, I, I'm not.
My gosh, what are we talking about?
Dying on the sword over this, so I would, I'm, I'm completely okay with waiting.
Would you like it on July 12th, then? And then have the report on July 12th, and then approve in the first meeting in August?
Sure.
Maybe part of the application process.
One other, one other thing that, again, and it, the same holds true, honestly, for, we had a, obviously, lengthy conversation on QCOM, same holds true with OPEB. These are just your impacts. They're going to only allow us to do a certain amount, because you can take, you know, it's the implicit and explicit rate subsidy, and they, those are actuarial calculations that they're gonna say, oh, no, 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 you're only limited to this dollar amount. And so just realize that, I mean, OPEB, if you're going less than, you know, 800,000, then I'd set a dollar amount, otherwise, you can go high, but realize, we might be limited to 850,000, because that's the max we can go to.
And who decides that?
Uh, well, it's going to be the, the information that I submit to the Department of Education, and it's going to be probably our implicit rate subsidy, and I just, and they're gonna look and say, this is the calculation, less this, this, and this, and here's your dollar amount. So, you could say up to a million, you could say up to 500,000. The lower you go, we're probably setting the limit. The higher you go, we could still get capped before we reach that limit. So go with your comfort level on impact, not necessarily the dollar, I mean, we'll get as much as we can, but just so you recognize that.
So if we say a million tonight, we can still come back in December and say 800,000?
You absolutely could. Or the state, or the state could say 800,000, and you say, we don't like 800, we're doing five. I mean, you still have that opportunity.
And can you just remind us again, are we still at like about one, two million every year for that? And last year, how much of it came out of the general fund, and how much came out of